Call the order, meeting order, record if members present and absent, please.
Barton.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
And Pendleton is absent.
Thank you. Open meeting's appliance state of red, please.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Albert Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certified that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, including Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view in the office of the superintendent.
Thank you. Consider agenda all of the following items as concerned reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote. Unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items, the consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of the following: 3.1, addition of new items to the agenda; 3.2, minutes of a regular meeting and a special meeting; 3.3, approval of financial reports; 3.4, approval of purchase order encumbrances for the following funds: general fund, building fund, and child nutrition fund; 3.5 is approval of extra duty assignment schedule; 3.6 is approval of activity fund report; 3.7, approval of activity fund fundraisers; 3.8 is approval of activity fund inter-account transfers; 3.9 is approval of the child nutrition report; 3.10, approval of board's policy and procedures; and 3.11, prepare the following items as surplus. So we'll go back up to one.
Five, any business.
Okay, 3.2 is the minutes. They obtained the motion to accept the minutes as presented. If you'd like to do that.
We'll do it all.
Derek's telling me I can do that.
We'll do it all at the end.
All at the end. Okay, keep that, keep that in your pockets, okay? Approval of the financial report. Mr. Bashir's, I'm going to toss the ball to you, sir.
Well, we'll talk about the gift fund, Fund 81, first. As of the end of, this kind of gets updated once a year, as far as this report. The end of June, or June 30th, the 24th, there was $372,724.83 in Fund 81. That was split between five accounts. In December, we did receive a gift of $30,000 from Albert State Bank that went into Project 215. That is the Fine Arts Project. That brought our total balance of Fund 81 to $356,173. That's where a lot of our, majority of our investments come out of that fund as well. Looking at our revenues. Looking at our revenues, at the end of April, we have collected $17,510,230 for the year. For the month of April, we collected $806,850. That's $82,621 more than what we collected in April of '24. Since August, we've seen an increase in our collections of $1,119,473. It's a little bit skewed because there's some one-time money in that, such as the payment we received early in the year for last year's teacher pay raise increase. That was $400,000 in that ballpark. $183,000, I think, for the school security grant. So there's $600,000 that, just in those two targets, that settlement. So there's some pretty big one-time deposits in that, but we are seeing a little bit of increase overall through tax collection. And we've got the majority of this year's taxes collected at this point, in January, March, so. Revenue, the building fund, kind of the same story. In April, we've collected $4,677,000. For the month of April, we collected $37,588. That was $11,196 more than what we collected in April of '24. There's really no, not that one-time money in the building fund, so that gives you an idea of, you know, $1,000 is a lot, but it is, it's a percentage, right? So we are seeing a little bit of an increase in tax collections. Since August, compared to last year, we're showing a decrease of $793,000. But that's mostly, the building fund is due to the, we had $850,000 deposit from insurance for the roof project last year. So if you take that $850 out, that was a one-time money deposit last year, we're actually at about $57,000 in what we would consider just an annual collection in the building fund. So revenues seem to be wholly fairly healthy right now. Looking at our investments. We are, everything's invested, interest rates have stabilized. Everything's invested between 4.2 and 4.95 percent, so we're still in that range. $6,996,000 invested in the general fund, $2,969,000 in the building fund. So on that operating money, investments were $9,965,000 total invested. $190,000 in child nutrition, $11,000 in the sinking fund of the old bond, bond issuance fund, and $260,000 in the gift fund. So total invested between those five And then just, I guess, that's all the revenues. Just to compare everything, kind of where we're really at, we have encumbered $384,810 less in the general fund than we had this time last year.
Say that again, please.
We have encumbered $384,810, less than what we had last year, okay? That's why if you look at the, on that, on that chart, the very last column is the paid column. That's in, it's broken into thirds, so that difference is, when it's a negative number, that's good. It's one of the few times in life where negative's good, right? Because that tells us we have, we have paid out less than what we had the same time, same snapshot, last year. Now, the general fund, you also had the air conditioner projects on that last year that was a pretty big expense, so maybe a little skewed that way. We have paid out, so we've encumbered $384 less, we've paid out $223,575 less. Which, that's good when you talk about balancing budgets and things like that. We're definitely working towards that end. We've encumbered $231,442 more in the building fund, and we paid $384,176 more in the building fund. So we've shifted some of those, those expenses from the general fund to the building fund, such as repairing air condisters and things like that. So you really have to look at both those funds together. So when you compare the two, the very last number on the paid column is $160,600. That's the general and building fund together. We paid that much more out this year than we had last. So we have shifted some of, keep in mind, we bought buses. The cost in additional $356,000 or so, we, we paid the full amount for the activity bus instead of leasing it, to try to save the district money in the end on the interest and what have you. So there are some big expenses that happened there that would have caused that. And we knew that was going to happen to take it out of savings, left the savings, so we invested back in, in the district and assets. Anyway, all in all, we're staying pretty healthy financially. I'll roll on into you.
Thank you.
Encumbrance, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Draw your attention to a handful of, we're getting to the end of the year and wrapping things up, so we've got a lot more general product encumbrances. Just highlight a few. PO 364, Sam is on services. He has to pay for a laser engraver for our STEM program here at the high school. It's really neat, Mr. Eckhart, he showed me some Yeti cups, a program for a Yeti brand. Yeti cups are heat engraved for golf tournaments. Yeah.
That's from our laser engraver work.
Does, stuff like that. I mean, we talk about career pathways.
That's anodized aluminum. This one is powder coated.
Yeah.
This is what we're moving our cereal plates to.
Kids, kids are definitely learning some job skills. PO 365, it's Mammoth Clay Company for $1296. That is, was for art supplies for Mr. McPherson's class. PO 366, Tri-band Roofing is $1,200 to repair the roof. In the old gym, we had the windstorm, took some of the tread work off the top, whatever, and they resealed the roof and then put that back on, keep it from leaking until we get the whole roof project done. PO 372 is to Adira for $4,927. That was for, oh, it's a, it's a program called LineWise. It's our firewall, that's what that amounts to. It's a part of our, part of these network upgrades we've been doing. All the switches, all the routers, server, and now firewall have been replaced through the, through this one thing, kind of snowballed. So at the end, it's going to be, we've had to invest a little bit. PO 374, it's Wex, our fuel cart, $5,500, just to give you an idea of how, how much traveling we're doing right now. PO 376 to Ramsey Solutions is $2,279 for financial literacy curriculum for our juniors. Every student has to take those 14 points of financial literacy, and they purchased some of Dave Ramsey's curriculum to do that with. PO 383, Wyatt Technical Services, $2,094. We had the new PA system. After we got the building wired and all that, he will, he will talk to the old PA. We had about four or six speakers that weren't compatible. They were just, you know, maybe original models to the building. So we had to upgrade those, those six speakers. So at this point, we get the phones put in, the PA should be working in the high school. It totally is functional at this point, so we're, we're finally getting to the end of that. POs 388 to 393, it's $4,106. That was OETT grant purchases. And then PO 393 is to Amazon, again, $485 for the Teach Oklahoma grant. So we've got a lot of grant money floating in this month. PO 395 is to Midwest Best Sales for $9,788. That was for damage repair when we returned the three lease buses, three we didn't purchase. Loose mirrors or cracked fenders or things like that. It's really just road wear on buses, especially when you get on dirt roads and things like that. It's just, nature of the beast. The cool part about purchasing the buses that we did, instead of paying $9,700 for repairs, that'll be $1,000 deductible next year. So owning the buses will save us $8,700 just in, just in that. PO 401 is to J&amp;J Appliance, $2,700 for a new washer and dryer in our fax classroom, Family Consumer Science classroom here at the high school. That is being purchased with program assistance money from Career Tech, so that'd be another grant, if I get that one set. Just a little overview of the, of the general fund. When we look at the building fund, there's not a lot, not there. We had one, had to fix the ice machine at, here at the high school. We had two HVAC repairs, and then a, start pest control, feed, to spray all the cafeterias and kitchens and things like that. And then we had a couple on child nutrition this month. Then we had a, I think it was a Longfellow for washing machine, went down, so we replaced the washing machine in the kitchen there. And then the air conditioner, I can't remember if it was the kitchen or cafeteria, but that facility at Washington.
It says kitchen.
Okay. So there's an old window unit that went out, and we replaced it with a maintenance kit, be a little more reliable, last longer, be a little more efficient. So we were able to, because of our child nutrition, because they're both tied to cafeteria. Anyway, that's my financial report.
Anything on approval of activity fund? Same thing listed in the 3.5, approval of extra duty assignment schedule, so.
There's nothing on that.
3.9 for the child nutrition report. 3.6, the activity fund revenue and expenditure year-to-date and expenditure summary for April.
Just a little bit on the, there's not, not a lot going on there. Just wrap up some fundraisers and things like that. Baseball fundraising, their fundraiser, they deposited $4,237, and then FFA deposited $3,988. And that is kind of wrap, again, wrapping up the end of the year on a lot of those deposits. And of course, activity or the athletics account is going to, you know, you have $15,000 in payments, but that's, that's fees and, and some uniforms, gear, that kind of thing, and officials. So that's about all that's going on with the activity fund.
So nothing on 3.7, 3.8, wait, 3.9 is approval of child nutrition funds.
It looks like we spent like $112,000 on activity.
You're looking, that's the year-to-date.
Okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
That's everything from August to now.
I see now, sorry. Thank you, thank you for asking.
I'm always interested in what the fundraising, like, raises.
I'll go at the dust settle, I'll go over that year-to-date report probably next month.
Okay.
It's, it's really amazing how much money we do spend through that activity account. And the big spenders is athletics and some of our career tech programs.
That's your progress.
Lots of fundraising goes on. Child nutrition, and we served 1,125 more breakfast and 2,574 more lunches this month, or in April. But again, if you remember in March, it's a short month, had spring break and some of that kind of stuff in it, so. Then, it's kind of a summary of finances, child nutrition account. We revenueed $20,883 less in April than, than we did in April '24. We revenueed about $50,970 more for the year. It's, again, some of these, some of these reports are just a snapshot right now, so we still have about $15,000 outstanding in unpaid lunch bills and things like that. So a little push to close some of that right now, and again, next month, we'll have a lot clearer picture where that child nutrition count's going to end. But we do have, we will have a carryover in that, and that's why we've been trying to move some expenses to the child nutrition, because the state limits as to what that carryover can be. So we're trying to, trying to spend some of that, so we don't lose our spending that way.
3.10 for the board policies.
About four policies, and a handbook, kind of, that's a procedure. I'll let, I'll let Hattie talk about, the policies are all special ed.
Yes.
I'll say something about her.
Okay. So the State Department is implementing a new six-year monitoring cycle on all districts. It began as a federal regulation, and they're still going to continue this six-year monitoring cycle. Federal law says that we are to be monitored, the states are to monitor us every six years or more if needed. And there are many districts across Oklahoma who have not been monitored in 15-plus years, and we happen to fall on that end. So we are lucky enough to be chosen as Cohort One, Quarter One.
Yay.
So we are the guinea pigs on all this monitoring stuff, so.
Well, we'll set the standard.
We'll set the standard, that is right. So they are requiring 44 procedures and five board policies be updated. And we already have approved one of our board's policies earlier in the year, so that one's not listed, but these four need updated. Most of them are just wording updates. And there's one, Mr. Bashir, I believe it's the ESY that we are adding to it, is that correct?
Child, child.
Was it the child fine? Okay, the child fine was listed as special ed, so we're changing that to more of a child fine policy and rewording some things in there. And then ESY, we are updating that to match, and then the rest of it's just kind of updating the language to more of what we consider people-first language and special ed appropriate. So if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And you're stricken, what you're taking out and putting in there, correct?
A huge thank you. I, I did some work, Mr. Bashir's helped me this weekend do some things, and he made it pretty for you guys, so it looks better.
No, he helps a bunch, because I.
It does. Perfect. And then also, a huge thank you to my special ed teachers and Ms. Owen for helping, helping me write the 44 procedures that we've been lucky enough to do.
I'll list it here.
The procedures are not here yet. The policy is needed this week, so.
That's.
Thank you.
We worked with the State Department to write all those policy settings. To break the toy, there's a lot of input from us. Kind of where they tell you to on that one.
Rest, okay.
And then the last one, Coach Beeler approached me last fall about the need to get kind of a handbook for all of our coaches with all of our policies. You know, pulling out a student handbook, a policy, or sometimes this procedure, we always do, that's not written down anywhere. So personally, about putting together a handbook like that, and there's some other schools that we model that have things like this in place. We started doing it, ended up being 50-plus pages long, I think. It's literally just all of our policy procedure that we more or less always do. So I'll let Dalton talk a little about that handbook.
So with this handbook, you know, we want to, we've spent a lot of time this year talking about having a positive culture. What I don't want to say is we have a bad culture, because we don't. We want to put a lens in front of our culture, and this is going to give our roadmap to all of our coaches to do that. The best way I described it to the coaches in the meeting in the first semester is, you know, there's a handful of ways to get from Albert to Oakland City. There's not a wrong way. And everyone's taken a different route. We all want to get on the same bus to get to the same location. And this, like I said, is going to allow us to do that. In the handbook, you're going to find things on how to handle different major discipline issues, lesson plans, practice plans, scheduling, policies, all of those things that are going to allow us to be on the same page in a much clearer fashion, instead of Coach A doing things his way with the little things, and Coach B doing things his way or her way with the little things. We want it all to be the same playing field. So the idea behind that is a coach can go from one sport to the next and basically run that program from a logistical standpoint. You know, I, I don't know anything about basketball, but I would like to be able to have policies in place that I can step in if I need to, and I can logistically get to the end of the season. You know, maybe calling Coach Hanson up on different drills and stuff, inviting him to practice, you know. And then also, a kid knows, when I go from my fall sport to my winter sport to my spring sport, logistically, it's the same. You know, so that, that's really what drove us to this, was trying to clear things up for everybody.
Send me your focus.
Scott, we include, I mean, when you start, when you start doing things like this, oh, that won't take long.
It grows, it grows.
3.4, did you have some?
We didn't have anything. That's what I mean, we were, there was nothing in place. We were just pulling from multiple areas, you know, and so we're just trying to, trying to condense to one manual, kind of like your, if your car breaks down, you take it to the courthouse. They've got a manual that says how to fix every F-150 in the world, right? That's what we're trying to do, is have that manual, this is who we are, this is what we do.
And this will be presented when, to the coaches, I mean?
Soon, soon, before the end of the school year. So anyway, that, that's what that was about. Just wanted you guys to see it.
Thank you for your hard work. That's, that's a lot.
If you read through it, it's obvious, you've spent, people spend a lot of time.
You bet.
Pulling this together and make it fresh.
Well, we, that's about culture, you know, we talk about being symbol of excellence, and I think we have to set, we have to set the bar for that. So from a leadership view, that's what Coach Beeler came to me and how we make this happen. And I've worked with him last four, five months, and this is where we ended up. Anyway, that's all the policy and procedure.
Hey, and nothing to have anything surplus?
Nothing surplus.
Hey, questions on any of your, what's going to do there?
I relatively approve items 3.1 through 3.11.
For the second?
Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Moving on, the administration report, and here is Mr. Bashir's, the following report, you can start at 4.1 and then right on through.
Several principles reports. After the principles, I've asked Mr. Beeler to do a, a faculty director report, so we're open at the year, and there's a bunch of extra stuff, so there'll be one extra. Start with Washington.
Okay. As normal, the enrollment is there, it has not changed since last month, so I'm not going to read through that. We have a lot of activities going on this month. We only have nine days left of school. We don't count the day we're on, we just count what's left.
So you know, yes.
You've got that breadth of, you've got that.
Yes, yes. So only nine left. We did have our final awards assembly on Friday, and so I want to acknowledge some of our award recipients. We have the Masonic Lodge Student of Today, that is a first grade, and I guess through elementary award, and that's voted on by all of our staff. And those two students were Heston Willard and Harper Lee. That's a very prestigious award for our elementary students. Next page, there are another picture. Our Teacher of Today is Sadie Wilson. She's a pre-K teacher, and that's also like our Teacher of the Year that we award every year. And we had the lovely Ms. Ida Evans come and do her presentation of the award and her gift. And then our next award is Perfect Attendance. I love running this report every year because it's pretty rare to have perfect attendance. Very, very rare, especially at Washington. And we ran it, and by golly, this student has not missed a day of school all year. So Truman Long received that. And a few, I guess it was last year, we had, oh, I don't know his first name, Mr. Reed from Al, I know there's a few different Reeds. Do you remember his first?
Larry.
Larry. He donated us like boxes and boxes of trophies. And so we just, it's our new tradition, we're going to give out trophies and we put a new label on them, and so they also got a trophy, which they really liked. The next award was the Top 12 Accelerated Reader Students. And this is really a big accomplishment, because, you know, all of these students are beginning readers. And so most of their books are picture books or like smaller books. I mean, for the most part, every book they read is half of a point. So like our top reader had 150-some points. That's a lot of half-point books that she's reading. So that is a lot of reading going on, so a big accomplishment. We had a few other awards that we handed out, but those were our most prestigious, like I said. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned those. Last month, I talked about the OSU Extension Office coming in and hatching chicks with our first graders. It was a wonderful It was a wonderful month. They came in once a week and checked on the eggs. They candled the eggs. They do a lesson each week about the growth of the baby chicks. And they actually got to watch them like hatch. Has anyone ever experienced that? It is actually really amazing. Like, it was so cool. The kids loved it and you can scroll down. They let them out and ran around and you can't hack them on. Yeah, they got to hold them and yeah, it was a big-
That's what's best, look at that.
Yeah, and that's so sweet. Anyway, it was a great time and they, it was a fun month of learning, a little science activity there. So, that is all for Washington this month.
Thank you.
That is it. I shortened it up.
Longfellow, short and sweet, same enrollment numbers as last month, thankfully. We didn't lose anyone. Field trips. Third grade went up to the Sedgwick County Zoo today in Wichita. And second grade will go to Exploration Place in Wichita tomorrow. So, we are field tripping it up at Longfellow. Our spell-a-thon, the top, the top three students that raised the most money got to go out to lounge in a shopping spree with me. And so, these are our three kiddos. Bryson Kryman, he was the third highest. He got a $50 shopping spree. Swayze Reagan was the second highest and she got $75. And then, Jacob Benford, he got to spend $100. And we went to Walmart. We had so much fun. We went out to eat. I saw Mr. Hanson there at McDonald's and they were just the politest kids. We had so much fun shopping. I didn't know, I was like, oh, this is going to take forever. But they were thinking of, they were thinking of, oh, I don't buy stuff for a teacher. I don't buy some, my mom was, this is your money. You can spend it however you want. They were sweet. They were thinking about theirs and wanting to buy for their family and teachers. It was really cute. We had a lot of fun. We did that last week. State testing is done. Woohoo! We completed that on Wednesday. So, excited to have that over with. It's a fun time to be in Longfellow this week, next week. We had a tour. First grade came and toured last week and we had a lot of fun. First grade enjoyed it. Third grade's going to go tour Lincoln next week on Monday. We're going to have our final, can't say it, final Friday finale celebration this Friday. But here's the big one.
I'm ready.
Karen, I'm writing it down.
I've been waiting all year.
We are finally going to have a big fun day Tuesday afternoon, starting at 1:00. We're going to have a water balloon fight that they, since they raised over $15,000 spell-a-thon, starts at 1:00. And then, we'll do pie in the face following that and dunk tank. I like, it is just going to be a whirlwind of water and pie.
This is your day of dunking?
This is the day I will be dunked. I will have a water fight and I will hit, I think, 20, 30-some pies in the face. I don't know the number.
Would the dunking be first or last? Because I don't want to miss that. I've been, you know, so hyped up myself.
We're still trying to figure, I'm trying to figure out, do we get all the pie and then dunk? So, like, we get cleaned off? Or is that just gross? Because we'll be dunking each other's pie, I don't know.
Are you going to use shaving cream or are you going to use whipped cream?
I do. Cool Whip is what we've done in the past. I know some people use shaving cream. I've never done that. I think it would burn. It would taste terrible. I would much rather have the Cool Whip.
Just with the Cool Whip, just make sure you use dairy base. Because if you use oil base, it is completely nasty.
It does not, no, we've done that. And I don't know, last time we did, it was before COVID. It took multiple showers to get that off.
I've been there.
Yes, and my hair was, yes, it was very greasy. And I hadn't even thought about that, so thank you.
Yeah.
That's a great tip, haven't thought about that.
Always handy call.
Yes, that was, that was a great thought. So, and then, we'll have, we do a field day just in our playground. We do kind of similar things that they do at the Little Olympics, plus a few fun ones like a three-legged race and some other things. And we're going to have that. Our awards assembly is the 15th at the auditorium here at 1:30. So, we'll be celebrating our kiddos just like Madison just got done. And third grade rings the bell at 1:30, last day of school. That's a big, big deal for our third grade students. So, we'll have lots of fun these next two weeks.
All right. For Lincoln, same, our enrollment is the same. And state testing, yes, has wrapped up. For the most part, we still have a few individuals finishing up. We had over 100 testing sessions in two-week period. So, when we say it's hard to make up tests, it's hard to make up tests because we have to have the proctors and all of that. Our students did a great job and we're so proud of their efforts. We had a few people come in from the community to help us with our proctoring session. So, we thank Janet Cunningham, Katie Loggs, and Usinia Buckholz, Liz Shealike, and Edith Wheatner, taking time out of their day to come in and help us do that. Sit and watch the paint dry on the wall. So, it's good times and they're there for multiple days. So, we really, truly appreciate them. Our parents for bringing snacks and drinks for the students. We appreciate their support as well. Our teachers and the parents for hard work keeping the students motivated throughout that time and quiet hallways. We had some students from the middle school come over. Our fifth grade teachers organized this and read some poems that they wrote. Those poems were published in OSU Anthology, so that was a fun little activity. And they got to share what they enjoy about middle school. So, that was just kind of some icing on the cake for having them cover and read those poems and talk about that. Mrs. Clapp brought in Dr. Wickham from Northwestern. And one of the students, they came in and did a chemistry lesson with their fifth graders. So, you know, within all that state testing, we had some fun things going on too to kind of keep things lively. Fourth grader spent this past Thursday at Fairgrounds, participating in Ag Safety Day. So, they always enjoy that. And we've kindly gotten that back to a full day after, right after COVID, it went to a half-day, but they pulled that back into the full-day event. So, that's, that's a good time. And then, of course, Quanlal Olympics meet was April 25th and we had 87 students participate in Lincoln. Our Silver Shoe winners were Eliana Utterback, Jackson Kincaid, Kylie Jones, Peyton Jones, Paisley Edman, Eli Nickel, and Cashin Kerberly. So, we've got some great tracksters coming up in these next few years. And then, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So, I just want to say thank you to all of our teachers in the district who go above and beyond every day to serve our students in Alba. Teachers are just amazing people and I mean, that's, that's why we are all here doing what we do because we love, we love teachers, we love school, we love education. And their teachers are truly amazing people who truly exhaust every effort to provide that safe, fun nurturing environment for our students despite the many complications and mountains that they have to climb. So, thank you, teachers. Thank you for what you do.
Thanks for taking my thunder. Because I was going to thank you, but I'll tell you a question. I saw something today that said, teachers make more decisions in one day than a brain surgeon does. And it has to be quick and it has to be fair and it has to be accurate. And it has to teach and it has to be good. Brain surgeons are lovely people. So, thank you for what you do. It is a calling and we do appreciate you so much. Thank you for doing that, I'm sorry.
Okay, on to the middle school. We finished our testing with 100% completion. Sometimes that's pretty hard to do, you know, getting all the kids if they're out sick. We, you know, they still continue with activities, so getting them all in sometimes can be rough. Today, our kids, 50 kids went to the AR trip at the Clinton Water Zoo. They were getting back about 4:30, so I think they had a fun day. And to be eligible for that, they had to get the minimum number of AR points each nine weeks. So, that's, that was their big prize for the end of the year. We had eight students went to state TSA. There was a group that participated and got seventh in the Leadership Strategies. Unfortunately, we didn't have any national qualifiers this year. But, you know, Ms. Woods always does a fabulous job with those kids and, you know, she might be a little bit happy she doesn't have to try to fundraise for that. That's, you know, in the summer, that's kind of a busy thing. So, let's see, on Friday, they raced the TSA dragsters. So, each semester, there are, they make the dragsters and they save them all until the end of school and then race them all. So, that was a whole day of the CO2 cars blazing through the cafeteria, which is always fun to go watch. The first semester winner was Amelia Kelly and the second semester winner was Blaze Bivin. And Blaze was also the overall winner. So, that was fun to watch. FCC LA Conference, Mrs. Hurst took eight students to that. If you remember about two board meetings back, we said, you know, Alex Wanzar was going to compete in the state. He did go compete and he ended up placing third in state on his Work Ready table setting. So, that was a huge accomplishment for him. Our Alba Middle School band went to the ceiling music contest and they received superior ratings. And we had an eighth grade percussion duet, Lila Schmidt and Amber Andrews, who also earned a superior rating for their performance. And that was, you know, super fun to watch. And then, you guys make it up to the high school for the show choir contest that was held up here. It was very entertaining. There was, you know, tons of people here watching that. Middle school ended up having a third place in that, so it was very good.
Very well.
All right, so, high school. I have been remiss in giving you our enrollment numbers. So, our freshman class, we have 64 students right now, sophomore 72, junior 68, senior 63, and our total enrollment is 267. So, we're doing pretty well. End of year festivities at the high school are just nuts. We don't know what we're doing one day to the next. It just keeps coming out of, at full swing. So, last week was a really exciting week. We started the week with our awards assembly and I had the counselors total up for us just an approximate number of what our scholarships totaled. And it was $439,081.66. That is an estimate because some of our students received full rides. I want to highlight Harper Houston, who received the Toma Scholarship. She's one of 20 students from rural Northwest Oklahoma schools that received the Toma Scholarship. It's a full ride to OSU for as long as she is in school at OSU. So, that's pretty exciting to be able to receive that. And I know that Harper has some great big plans that she's, she's going to be tackling over the next decade as she embarks on her college career. Northwestern, talking with Matt Adair and Caleb Mossberg after the awards assembly, Northwestern gave over $150,000 in scholarships as well. So, it's pretty exciting to be able to have our kids be as successful as they are and to receive that recognition through scholarships. I put in here that we had three students or three universities named our students to the President Leadership Class. It's actually four. So, Evan Ferguson is going to be in the Presidential Leadership Class for University of Oklahoma, Brady Lot at Redlands Community College, Toby Anton at the University of Central Oklahoma, and Kate Parker, Caden Lambert, and Campbell Gaspard at Northwestern. So, very excited for all of them. I might need to follow Evan because he also gets to study abroad in Italy as a part of that class. So, pretty excited about that opportunity for him. So, great stuff with that. Our kids, it honestly was one of the best assemblies I think we have had in quite some time. The kids were incredibly respectful. There was a great diversity of students that were recognized and that was very exciting for all of us, you know. Not one, just the same two or three kids that received everything. It's kind of a testament to some degree to our counselors, to our parents probably hounding those students to get all of those applications sent in. Some of our kids who are just super driven to be able to do all those applications. So, that was, that was really great. State FFA convention starts this week. We had a few of our students who were in the choir, Merritt Mance and Isaac, oh, no, Merritt Mance, I've forgotten the name. Couple of our ag students. Can you think of who it is, the other kid who's in the choir? They had to be there starting yesterday. And so, they're really excited about being able to perform with the FFA choir. So, that's, that's a fun thing. Banquet is next week on the 15th, so we're excited about that. It will be at AMS. I won't steal Mr. Beeler's thunder about track and girls' golf, but our Band of Gold went to the Tri-State Festival last week. They received ones across the board and they did win the sweepstakes for that competition. So, very excited for their successes and proud of how hard they have all worked this year. We had our inspection dogs here last week. That was a great time. Mr. Beeler and our SRO, Dice Klein, and I spent the afternoon in the parking lot going through and just sniffing cars and inspecting. When they were here last time, January, right? I think they were here in like January, February. It was December. Oh, well, time flies, who knew? We were in the south parking lot, so they came this time. We were in the north parking lot. And to have that, that experience is so fabulous because the handler says, where do you want to start? Well, start at the end of the row and work your way down. And it's not any particular cars. We don't do anything that says, you should go look at Paul Barton's car. We make sure to just say, start at the end of the row. And they hit on whatever car and they sniffed out everything from alcohol cans from time before. They were very, they were older cans, but they can, the dog still sniffs that out. Nicotine vapes, we found several of those. There were over-the-counter drugs. There were allergy meds, the things like that. And sometimes it was just trace scents that they, they found from like gunpowder from a time before or something like that. So, the neat thing about having the handler come in and visit with the kids, she starts with, here are the four things that we're going to be sniffing for. Whether it be drugs that are, you know, not controlled substances or prescription drugs, tobacco products, or firearms, or some kind of gunpowder. That's the four areas that this dog is sniffing, sniffing for. And she will give them that education. Is there anything that maybe I should be aware of before I, you know, inspect your car? And so, she has that conversation. And then, afterwards, she'll talk about what they found and what might have been if, if there's not something that is readily apparent. One of the students will say, well, I went hunting, you know, and so, I had my gun in there. Okay, well, here's what you need to do to make sure you clean all of that out and air it out. And it's a great time of education for the students as well. Again, cross-section, it wasn't a particular student or only students from a particular group. It was cross-section from across the school. So, it was, it was a lot of fun to be able to have those conversations with those students and be able to help them to make better decisions. We're not saying you can't have those things in your car at times, but what do you need to do and what's okay to have on campus and what's not. So, we will be inviting them back next year and we look forward to that opportunity to continue to educate our students and be able to have that time with them.
What do you do if you find, I mean, what do you do if you find?
We found things and students receive tickets and they receive consequences. So, you know, we follow our discipline matrix. And if it's something that's within that matrix, then we will, the student will have consequences for that. If it's something that doesn't fall, because we, we found some things that are not necessarily according to the law that the student can possess. And so, the students receive citations for that from our SRO. And we didn't do anything because it's not, doesn't, doesn't deal with school. It has nothing to do with our discipline matrix, but they received their citation and that was the end of that for us. If they had, we had nicotine vapes that we found. Those students served time in ISS and in-school suspension, as well as we'll have a cessation program that they will get to go through. So, if they had nicotine vapes in their vehicle, then we probably need to talk about that tobacco product and is that something you really should be using or not using? So, it was, it was good education time and there are some consequences that come along with that. Yeah, yeah. So, that's all I have for my report. Thank you all very much.
Mrs. Montini, what, what is the number of the eighth graders?
No, I can't tell you right now. It hasn't changed from last month and I just totally forgot.
No, I just always like to see what's coming in and what we're losing. Because at one time, this senior group was over 100, do you remember?
Yeah, I can, I can tell you at the end of Dalton's report. How about that?
No, it's just interesting.
No, I-
Because it went from 157 to eighth grade is 63.
So, athletics, at the beginning or-
So athletics, at the beginning or right after spring break, I sent out a note on our Facebook page and I counted up possible 112 events and we're down to two. So I feel distressed, you know, fall off of my shoulders a little bit. Baseball wrapped up their season this past Saturday. They had to play in Putnam City. It was supposed to be in Washington, but Washington was underwater at that point in time. So they moved regionals to Putnam City. They won or they split their two games on Friday and they had to drive back and they lost Saturday. And they finished 16-17. So some of the individual spotlights that I want to talk about. Campbell Gassford, Coleman Gassford, and Keen Kimberly all received all district. Honorable mention for all district is Hunter Flader and Logan Bergen. And NWOBCA, which is your Northwest Oklahoma Baseball Coaches Association. All-stars are Campbell Gassford, Logan Bergen, and Hunter Flader. And all of these are voted on by the coaches and those little, you know, the district coaches and the coaching associations, they all vote on those. Campbell Gassford was nominated for All-State as well as to play in the K-101 Classic Bowl baseball game. And we'll find out at a later date on if he earned those honors. Girls' golf, they are actually in Muskogee right now. They finished day one of two at the state tournament. They fared okay. Looking at the scores on the app, they kind of had a rough day, but it's okay. They're there competing, they're getting experience.
And there were five young ladies that got to go to state, right?
Correct.
Ending on five.
Yes. And I don't have any individual spotlight for the girls because they're still playing. I wanted things to wrap up before I added to that. They did win academic state championships. So they will get Trinity Johnson, who's kind of head of golf with OSSAA. He will present that to them tomorrow after the state tournament concludes. We'll get a banner for him and put it up in the gym like we have years past, all that fun stuff. Boys' golf, we finished last Thursday at Boylan Springs. The team qualified for regionals. I was proud of them for that. This is the first year they got rid of the qualifying round. And it was based on your performance throughout the season. And we did well enough as a team for us to go and compete in that. We struggled a little bit. Cash Shipley, tell a little story about him real quick. Mr. Brashiers and I, we've been texting back and forth a lot lately about what a symbol of excellence is and what is that? When you think of a symbol of excellence, you think of the kid that goes and wins 100-meter dash and wins the state championship in one act and all of those things. But Cash, he's the kind of kid that he usually shoots in mid-80s to high-70s a round, 18 holes of golf. The first round at regionals, it's two rounds, so we had to play 36 holes. The first 18, he shot a career low or high, however you want to word that, of a 91. Awful round of golf for Cash. He turned around and he was within three strokes of making it to state based off his second round. And the way he battled that adversity and just kept chipping away, nothing was working for him. But the attitude was phenomenal. I had so many coaches come up to me and talk about how his mannerisms out there on the course and he just never faltered. And all the kids, honestly, they all loved what we were doing. But I was texting Mr. Brashiers about how that is a symbol of excellence. When adversity kicks your door down and sits on your couch and refuses to leave and you just don't throw fit, you keep working. So I was proud of Cash for that. The boys' golf team, we finished, I'm sorry, Cash tied for first at the Tipton Tournament and he placed second at the Alba Tournament. So we'll run down on boys' golf. Girls' soccer, we finished April 29th with a 3-7 record. Some individual spotlight there. All-district honorable mentions are Sam Bowden, Peyton Smith, Randy Perks, and Kayla Meyer. All-district selections Julie Church, Isabella Ramirez, and Asia Blacklich. And Asia, on April 8th versus Aztecs, set a single-game scoring record. She had eight goals that game, which is pretty phenomenal. For those of you that aren't familiar, if you score 10 goals, if you get up by 10, you run a little team in soccer. So she almost did that. That's impressive. All-state honorable mentions Julie Church. And all-state selections are Randy Perks and Isabella Ramirez. That's impressive stuff there. Boys' soccer, we finished on April 28th with a 4-8 record. All-district honorable mentions Joe Cox, Owen Vermillion, Isaac Anton, and Gavin Lowenstein. All-district Cade Parker. All-state honorable mentions Joe Cox and all-state Cade Parker. So great for those guys. I know they enjoyed the heck out of the season. Coach Cool did a good job with them. So proud of them for that. Track, they're still performing. They've got state this Friday and Saturday in Ardmore. They're going to leave Thursday at 10:30. So the girls there, we've got Lincoln Gaddy, who's going to compete in the 200, 400, the 4x2 and the 4x4 relays. Sunday Friday in the 400, the 4x1, the 4x2, and the 4x4 relay. Kylie Adair, 400, she's part of that, 4x1, 4x2, 4x4. Keely Bowling's going to compete in the pole vault. She's an alternate for the 4x1. Channing Ferguson, bless her heart, she got injured in basketball season. But talking to Coach Wilson, she's doing everything she can to help that program. She's going to manager and then help assist with whatever he needs. Camry Rhodes is going for pole vault. Josie Webster, she's on the 4x4. Trinity Stevens, she'll be on the 4x1, 4x2 alt, 4x4 alt. Michael Alvin, she's going for long jump, pole vault, 4x1 and 4x2. Kelly Inland is going for high jump. So with the girls there, that's a lot and that's awesome. We'd love to see that. On the boys' side, Thangs Lance Mathers, he's going for shot put and discus. Kellen Pinko is going for high jump in the 400. Sean Hamlet for shot put. Dayton Murray, he's going to be an alternate on the 4x8. David San Diego, Hunter Stauffer, Michael Art, and Bryce Fisher are anchors for the 4x8 100-meter relay. Season's still going on, so I didn't list out any of the individual awards or personal achievements. You know, Kellen Pinko, 6'7", high jump, I think. And I was talking to Coach Wilson, because I was debating, do I put this in now? He said no, because there's a chance kids like him are going to go beat that. So I'm going to be right back here next month. So those updates are coming on the next board meeting.
Keep after it.
That's what, you know, I'm hoping for that. So with that, the seasons are going to conclude. We've got some notable dates coming up. May 7th at 1:30, we're going to have a signing day in the indoor facility for all of our seniors that are going and moving on and playing at the collegiate level. That night, we have a free physical night for female athletes, 7th through 12th grade. May 8th, we have the middle school all sports banquet at the high school gym. Talking with Ms. Martini, the cafeteria at the middle school is just not going to be large enough. So we moved it to the gym. It's going to be set up, ready to go anyways, so it's a good spot for that. May 14th, 7th through 8th males, free physical night. And then we got our summer camps. Summer Pride starts in June. The first week in June, we have our youth basketball camp, 2nd through 6th grade. The second week is baseball, same grade. That third week is going to be football. And then that last week, we're going 4th through 6th grade outdoor camp. Talking with Coach Mead, who's led that up the past couple of years. He feels that the second, third graders, believe it or not, second graders and third graders and bows and arrows don't mix too well. So we're going to turn the stress down just a little bit. And the big issue though is them just not having the physical strength to safely handle a 20-pound bow. And so we're going to do 4th through 6th on that. That'll be a two-day camp. And there's information on how much each camp costs. Your family will spend more than 50 bucks at the bill. You get a t-shirt and all that stuff. And elementary will just go through June for Summer Pride of High School. We'll go all the way through the summer. That's what we got.
Before we move on to super tennis sport, I really do want to reiterate how proud we are of all of you teachers. So thank them for us. It's hard for me to get around and thank them. And sometimes when they see me coming, they're, I don't know, they'll be a little nervous. I just kept to thank you for what you do. But thank you, continue to thank them because this is a very exhausting time of year. As you're all very aware, so thank you. Alright, Mr. Brashiers. 4.2, super tennis support.
Just a little bit about facilities. We're working with architects still on the needs of the new school building. You know, I have the principals sure of the buildings, some new buildings in the area for architects. So we've kind of got that idea of what's needed in the schoolhouse. Next step, we'll be scheduling a meeting with our capital improvement committee very soon, as in the next two weeks probably. I want to talk to our bonding company and meet with them before we have the big meeting so we can answer all the questions and have the right conversations. So that's coming. All of that question of how to appropriately address the needs we have at our Lincoln School. So we're definitely getting down the road on that, get some things done. We've had several HVAC repairs as the weather started warming up and kicked the air filters on. This one doesn't work, that one quit. So had several of those kinds of things. I do have solid estimates coming from Tri-Van Roofing on what the roof will cost, full replacement, whatever. So I'm working with O-CIG on that to try and get some resolution to that whole question. Because we know the roofs need to be replaced. So I actually had another company do a second opinion on it as well just to give some, put some bullets in their guns, so to speak, and talk to O-CIG. So two industry experts saying the same thing, it's full replacement. Then it's just going to become what's the depreciation? The question of how old the roofs are was resolved. I don't know what the roof is. It's a Duralast system. I knew this from roof replacement, but it did, Beaver. Duralast puts the manufacturing date, they stamp it in the seams of their product. So let's peel back the thing, like there's the manufacturing date. It's pretty easy to prove how old the roof is. Now we have a solid date that we can figure depreciation. Because we know things depreciate, I mean, we have to accept that. So we have a solid date, we can talk depreciation. I've got two things, two experts in the field saying, these are full replacements. The damage is that severe. So now it's just negotiating with O-CIG to get all that done. And that's just kind of where we're at. So we are getting that can kicked down the road a little bit.
Good, thank you.
I have been on here kind of some summer plans. There's a lot of things I would like to get. Somebody come in and power wash all of our buildings. If they clean it that way, there's some painting, exterior painting, particularly at Washington School. The one I'm thinking of is the soften around, the circle drive on the south side, some of that kind of stuff. I'd like to get done this summer. That may be contracted outside of our normal custodian personnel. I want them inside doing the things, waxing the floors and getting ready for kids in August. So this facility, that's kind of stuff coming. Transportation, 62 activity trips in April, that's 12 more than we had in March. However many days, 20, 23, 4 days in school and 62 trips. So just almost two trips a day on average. So it's a super busy time of year. On the people mover that's broke down, we're still looking for a cracked head. It's got one of those weird engines, it's going to be on search. Rest of time is kind of normal maintenance on the rest of vehicles. And I'll say this again, C.D.L.'s will be teaching a bus driver class at the tech center, June 2nd through 5th. I know we've got a couple of teachers showing interest. I would encourage anybody that would like or fault about driving a bus, contact us about taking that class. So we'll do the work out as far as tuition and things like that. Anyway, it's got some transportation. I did put it on here, I think I handed it out to you guys.
Yes.
I know they talked about some of the individual things, the buildings, just kind of the big stuff, big chunks, right? Tomorrow night, show choir concert here at auditorium. We have sports banquet on the 8th, band concert on the 10th, I think that's a Saturday. Sports banquet on the 12th. Lincoln's is their awards on the 14th. We have FFA banquet on the 15th. Longfellow is their awards on the 15th as well. 5th grade promotion is on the 15th as well, it's a very busy day. The 16th is 8th grade promotion and the 17th is high school graduation commencement.
And if I might add, that glory was decided after we put this together, May 11th, and it will be here in the auditorium at six, right? Yes.
And then the 19th, I'll take a really deep breath.
Yes.
Anyway, I gave you guys that list, just so you have that communication.
4.3, resignation, retirements, and reassignments.
Four resignations. Vanessa Garvey was a part-time Title I, two days a week, when she came in. Ms. Williams already has a, had somebody showing interest in that, replacing that. So Patricia Angle, secretary at the middle school and also did our child nutrition staff. Howard Millens, paraprofessional, and Scott Ball, high school history and baseball coach.
You wrote on you that, Terry? These are all reports.
Yep.
That's true. Thank you for clarification. What else? Well, see if we can do over here to 5.1. See if we can reach out people out of the hot seat that have sat there very patiently. They were pretty professional. Yeah, I think they were pretty good. So 5.1, discussion of council board action. Evoked to approve and offer employment on a one-year temporary contract. But one enough, two certified teachers for the 25, 26 school year.
Mrs. Williams has offered employment to Madeline Rankin at Washington. And Ms. Martini offered to Delaney Lambert at Middle School. So I would recommend the higher both of them.
Which one's Delaney and which one's Madeline? I know, I know. They've had to put up a name for a couple of that.
Would you like me to? I mean, just... This is Ms. Madeline Rankin, Mrs.'s. We've been lucky enough to have her as a student teacher this semester. So she was here at the beginning of the semester, so you may recognize her face. And she also has been a substitute for us for at least a year and a half plus. So we've been very fortunate to get to know her at Washington. She's worked with all grade levels, pre-K, kindergarten, first, all ranges of students too. So and she's a certified applicant, which I haven't had in two years. So I am so pleased to be able to hire Mrs. Rankin and we cannot wait to have her at Washington.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I would like to introduce Ms. Delaney Lambert. She will not be a Miss much longer. How many days will it be?
I don't know, almost a month exactly, actually, a month exactly today.
Okay, very good. So when she comes to us, she will be Mrs. Blankenship. So we are super excited about that. Delaney's a 2001 graduate of Alba High School. She earned her degree in December of this year. And then she came in and was a long-term sub for us for Mrs. Hayden. And she did a fabulous job and here she is. So now we're super excited to be able to offer her employment.
Well, my turn, thanks too.
Oh. I love so much.
My goodness, I know.
You did take a lot of pride, you did take a lot of... Oh, gosh, okay. About that. I would entertain a motion. Nice move. So move on Mr. McDermott.
I'll second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Welcome. It's all been real well to sit still for an hour and a half, you know?
I was impressed too.
It's amazing what all goes on behind the scenes and well, congratulations. You're welcome to stay. You may, that's it. Do whatever your bosses tell you you can do. But I mean, you have some more stuff, you know, but there's no necessary ways you say. But we're excited to have you. excited to have you.
Continue on your own.
Congratulations.
Yay! That was the secret ever. I ask at least five times a day.
I know you very well.
It's like, just waiting, you don't know. How can you be back for it?
Congratulations, congratulations. 5.2, discussion with possible board action, vote to employ certified teachers listed on Exhibit A for 25, 26 school year.
The teachers listed on Exhibit A have all been recommended by principals for rehire. I would recommend to do that.
I would entertain a motion.
Who to approve 5.2, Mr. Bashiers?
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
5.3, discussion with possible action to employ the certi-, oh, I've already said that one, sorry. Discussion possible action, vote to employ the non-certified personnel listed on Exhibit C for the 25, 26 school year. Did I miss 5.3?
Yes.
I did. Woo! I'm going to go back and correct that boo-boo. 5.3, discussion with possible board action, vote to employ the certified teachers listed on Exhibit B on the temporary contract for the 25, 26 school year. I apologize.
The list on Exhibit B that you have, principals have also recommended to rehire. I would recommend to do that.
Are they on a temporary one year?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve a certified temporary contract. Thank you, go second.
I'll second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Now, we shall go to 5.3, discussion with possible board action, vote to employ the certified teachers listed on Exhibit B. Oh, you had that one, golly. It is, I call it, okay. It's 5.4. Thank you, Jane. Well, someone's got to hold my hand.
No, it's, it's.
Well, I think I.
There's only one different word, non and.
It's not in my mouth yet, yes. Is that a good excuse, teachers? Okay, great. Shouldn't have technology problems. 5.4, discussion with possible board action, vote to employ the non-certified personnel listed on Exhibit C for the 25, 26 school year.
The list on Exhibit C, your support staff, paraprofessionals, aides, secretary of company, I would recommend to rehire all of those on the recommendation of our principals.
Terry, motion?
I move, we approve item 5.5.
Second. Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
5.5, discussion with possible board action, vote to employ the temporary appropriations for this year 26.
Pat Carroll with Carroll Associates prepares our temporary appropriations, has four years. He typically estimates about 90% of our current year appropriations for the temporary, that's just kind of a general rule of thumb that he uses. He has estimated appropriations of $14,806,788 in the general fund, and $3,875,741 in the building fund, $601,804 in the child attrition fund, and $300,000 of the gift fund. Buy, approve, and temporary appropriations, because we don't get our final appropriations till September-ish. Like they have to be to the exercise board by October 15th, October 1st. So this allows us to write checks and pay bills from July through October. That's what it does. Anyway, I would recommend to approve the temporary appropriations.
Do you want a motion?
I move, we approve item 5.5.
Second.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes. 5.6, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following end of school services for this year 25. Do we do these all together, Terry? Or summer reading and extended school year special ed services?
All together, it's great, you guys are good at that.
How do you guys do with voting for both of those? Summer reading looks like it's first.
Summer reading, Kathy, Mrs. Tucker has recommended hiring, and Mrs. Potter with her, Sadie Wilson, Tabitha Corrigan, Dawn Hill, and Chelsea Corneli to instruct and facilitate the summer reading program. And Mrs. Potter recommended hiring Kelly Kilman, Maya Stewart, and Becky Houston to instruct our extended school year special education services program in the summer. So I would recommend to approve 5.6.1 and 2.
Very much. I make a motion, we approve 5.6.1 and 5.6.2.
A second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes. 5.7, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following renewal contracts and membership services. These are usually very general repetitive things, but it's Oklahoma TLE evaluation system, Charles Carroll, SBA's associates, and Oklahoma State School Board, and psychologist education, so we've started with the TLE evaluation system, 5.7.1.
Okay, TLE is, see, it's the online evaluation system, 2013, 13 or 14, Oklahoma Personal TLE System, Tulsa Model for teacher evaluations. Barlow's Association is one that facilitates the website. So that's a subscription for administrators doing evaluations.
Okay.
Chad's Core, that's Pat Carroll, we just talked about that, temporary appropriations, and securing him for finances, things like that. S&amp;B CPAs Associates, Jay States and Company, that does our audit, State School Board Association, employment services, and that's all the things we do at OCPA. And Silas Stad is our student information and accounting systems, online. You just be winged, so everybody's just talking through it. Change name. I'd recommend to approve all those contracts.
Your motion? I make a motion that we approve 5.7.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, and 5. Is that a second?
Second.
Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes. 5.8, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a resolution for schools and libraries universal services E-Rate for the 25, 26. This resolution authorizes filing of the Form 471 application for funding school year 2025, 26, and the payment of the applicant's share upon approval of the funding and receipt of these services.
Approval of this allows us to file E-Rate claims that we use primarily for internet service. AT&amp;T or OneNet's kind of, we've gone back and forth, going through that bid process, E-Rate, where we use Keller and Sovereign to help facilitate all that. So this resolution would allow us to actually file the forms to do all the things, get the E-Rate.
We've used E-Rate for many years. Kind of started all that, I've been around a bit. I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve item 5.8.
Second?
Second. Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. 5.9, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the Alba School District youth camps for the summer of 25, which must be referred to later.
My battery died on my computer. Sorry, you've got the list in front of you?
Are there some that are not on this list?
Oh, thanks. Is anything not on the list? No, everything that's planned on doing is on there.
Are there any separate fundraisers for certain programs that are different?
I'm sorry.
I'll ask you later.
Not that we've been talking. So I would recommend approving the camps on this list.
entertain a motion?
I recommend approval of item 5.9.
Second. McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
5.10, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve Northwest Technology Center to use one school bus to transport students between Northwest Technology Center and Northwest Oklahoma State University campuses during MASH Camp, May 21st through 23rd of 2025, Medical Exploratory Camp.
Something we've done last several years.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I'd recommend the tech center use, either whatever bus is transporting students.
Do you want a motion?
I see.
Second.
Second.
Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes. I think you're controlling my mouse, because it went from 5.11 to 5.11.
Mine does the same thing.
Oh, thank goodness.
It jumps around.
When I'm older, I've got maybe my eyes are just jumping.
It helps you pay attention.
I should, I thank you, Mr. Martin, I'll do a better job. 5.11, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve out-of-state travel requests for Alba Middle School track.
Will they, which track will be South Barbara, I think? Reschedule things, so we see to approve their out-of-state trip.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
I move, we approve item 5.11.
Second. Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes. Is there any new business?
I have none.
We're good, do you have any new business? I'm not seeing any. We will sign documents approved earlier throughout the school board, at a school board meeting, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
Second. Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.